This is the final session, part three in the Integrated EV Solutions Digital Festival, which began this week on Tuesday. Our topic for the hour today, the future of EV charging, and it's a special case study session, different format with Portsmouth City Council. Your chair for next 60 minutes, my name's Jim McClelland. I'm founder and editor of SussMeme, home to both the magazine in the top 500 rankings. Joining me on the panel and as your presenters this afternoon are Hayley Chivers, interim Transport Planning Manager and colleague Bethan Mose, Transport Delivery Manager, both from Portsmouth City Council. It is all live, as you will see, Q and A to finish. Pop your questions in the Ask a Question box, which you'll probably find roughly in the middle at the bottom of your screen, type them in there, please. You pose them, I'll ask them, they'll answer them. So a little bit about Elemental before we get started. So this webinar forms part of a programme of panel debates hosted and produced by Elemental, elementaldigital.co.uk. For those who don't know, it's the online community for professionals focused on innovation, heat, water, air and energy, the vital elements within the built environment now and in the future. Please note Elemental's CPD member, so the good news is that means all webinars are CPD accredited. Full diary of events on the website, range of upcoming webinars. You can also view the back catalogue, whole host of hot topics, including, I should mention, the two other webinars in this series, already broadcast earlier in the week. One on installing EV charging points at your building, the other on innovative EV charging options, all available on demand, great Hootoo speakers and free to access. So we've got a good bit to cover, we've got a great slide deck to look at. So a very brief intro from me first, I'm just going to recap a couple of key points from the last few days. So many of you may know this already, but figures from the Society of Motor Manufacturers and Traders, SMMT, show they're now over 530,000 battery electric cars on UK roads, plus a further 405,000 plug-in hybrids. Uptake's been boosted in part by the announcement made back in November 2020 by the UK government that there'll be a ban on all sales of new petrol and diesel cars by 2030. However, obviously, not only to service the existing users, but also support market growth and the decarbonisation of transport, it will depend not just on the vehicles themselves, but on the charging infrastructure, hence the series of debates. According to ZapMap, who were on the show earlier in the week, already over 35,000 charging devices, as they call them, installed at some 22,000 locations nationwide. Apart for transport, also on the show earlier, forecast for the end of the decade from then, they're talking in terms of numbers like 300,000 chargers in total. So you can see the scale of the growth needed and expected. So we've looked at solutions for integrated provision on-site buildings, current and latest trends in charging tech, the national map of charge points, grid capacity. This third and final webinar in the series explores an exemplar case study in depth, how Portsmouth City Council is successfully addressing not just the decarbonisation of transport, but also crucially associated air quality impacts through innovative and accessible EV charging infrastructure. Right, that's enough from me, let the PowerPoint begin. I shall now place you in the capable hands of Hayley and Bethan, so it's over to you two to tell us the story from Portsmouth, please.
Thanks ever so much. So yeah, I'm Hayley Chivers, I'm currently interim Transport Planning Manager at the council. That covers policy strategy development and pilot strategic projects like the introduction of EV charging in the city. Next slide, please. So just to give you a bit of background about the city, for those of you who aren't aware, Portsmouth is a predominantly island city, peninsula geography. There are only three main roads into the city and one train line. It's a very densely populated city with a lot of Victorian streets without off-road parking. Next slide. So in October 2021, we adopted our new transport strategy, and this is the vision from our new transport strategy or local transport plan. And that's by 2038, that Portsmouth will have a people-centred, connected travel network that prioritises walking, cycling and public transport to help deliver a safer, healthier, more prosperous city. So we really kind of wanted to bring people and the journey to the forefront of our transport strategy. Next slide. So within the adopted transport strategy, there are four strategic objectives. They are to deliver cleaner air, prioritise walking and cycling, transform public transport and support business and protector assets. And within those strategic objectives, there are a series of policies that provide more detail on them. You probably won't be able to necessarily read that text, it gets a little bit small, but policy B there is support infrastructure for alternative fuelled vehicles. So what we've got there is overarching strategic objective of cleaner air coming into a more than detailed policy about alternative fuel. Next slide. So the transport strategy is accompanied by an implementation plan, which sets out how the strategy will be delivered. It builds on the four strategic objectives and sets out prioritisation matrix as to how we're going to monitor and evaluate it. And it outlines in there a series of schemes, programmes and activities to enable the delivery of the vision. The implementation plan is for a three-year period. Next slide. But we do include in there our kind of overall 17-year plan. So we've got the first three years in more detail than the longer term. Again, you probably can't necessarily make out all the wording, but within there, there are a number of air quality and electric vehicle charging schemes to support the uptake of EVs in the city. Next slide. So we've developed the local transport plan and our next stage is now to develop a number of daughter strategies. So there'll be a number of principles running through those, as you can see on the screen, and those daughter strategies will include an air quality strategy, an electric vehicle or user strategy and a parking strategy. So those ones are probably most relevant to electric vehicle infrastructure. So we'll be developing those and supporting implementation or action plans to actually have the policy in place and as to how we're going to deliver these schemes going forward. So that's kind of a setting the scene on where Portsmouth's strategy is. And I'm going to pass to Bethan, who's going to talk specifically about the air quality in the city.
Thank you. Just to also say I'm in the office and there appears to be an office move going on, so there might be a lot of large tables going past and making a lot of noise. So yes, air quality. There's a reason why air quality has its very own objective in the local transport plan, and that's because it matters. The links between poor air quality, human health and the environment are well documented and are classed as a major public health risk alongside cancer, heart disease and obesity. And there's a growing awareness of the air pollution, human health relationship that has been driven by the evidence presented and the eventual conclusions of the 2020 coroner's inquest concerning the death of Ella Kissy Deborah. And in particular, the reiteration from expert witnesses that air pollution is a health risk regardless of threshold limits. So just touching briefly on that health risk, the health impacts of exposure to air pollution, they come about at every stage of life. The health effects of air pollution are complex and they range in severity. And damage can be gradual, or it could be associated with short-term peaks in air pollution. Next slide, please. But I think one of the big points to make is that the health effects are not uniform and it does not impact everybody in the same way. So everyone can be affected by air pollution, however, some groups are more susceptible than others when exposed, in particular children, the elderly, pregnant women, those with pre-existing health conditions and perhaps the one which is more relevant for the following slides in Portsmouth, those living in areas of high air pollution. And there's also clear evidence that people on low incomes are affected by air pollution disproportionately and in a number of ways. And that might be because they are more likely to have existing medical conditions or live in areas with poorer outdoor environments. Next page, please. So locally, air pollution across Portsmouth is of significant concern. The city council received a direction to implement a Clean Air Zone by central government, and this has been operational since November last year. So we'll have almost completed a year of operation in a couple of months' time. Despite a reduction of NO2 levels that were recorded in 2020 as a result of the change in traffic patterns and a number of lockdowns, air pollution remains a significant concern across the city. We have air quality management areas, so AQMA's, and they're located across the city. And we have known exceedances in pollutants outside of the Clean Air Zone boundary. It's important to note that NO2 acts as a marker for other pollutants and all pollutants will have a health effect to some degree. So delivering compliance with statutory obligations and further reducing harmful levels of pollution is a key priority for the council. And that's one of the reasons why it's such a priority in our local transport plan too. And the reason for that is because it's very well recognised that transport emissions will contribute a very significant amount to air pollution. Next slide, please. Okay. And just picking up on, I don't know how well these are going to come out, on my screen it's all a bit blurry, but just picking up on the air pollution and the disproportionate impact on our vulnerable communities. You know, Portsmouth is a relatively deprived city. We have some very significant pockets of deprivation and inequality. And what I was trying to show with this slide, which may or may not come across, is the location of our Clean Air Zone, which is to the west of the city. And on the screen, you can see it denoted by a slight pink shaded area and how that relates to people who are living in some of our most vulnerable communities. So the second picture is a map that was produced showing emergency asthma condition admissions to hospital in under 25s, overlaid with lower super output areas, so those areas with the highest levels of deprivation in the city in relation to where our AQMA's are. And those of you who are eagle-eyed will see that there is a red award which is red, which also happens to coincide with the location of the Clean Air Zone and one of our major AQMA's. We can't, we can't say for definite that there is a causal relationship between asthma admissions and air pollution, but there's enough there to warrant concern. And then the final map, I thought, was really interesting because this really picks up on the inequalities that we face here, is car and van ownership across Portsmouth. And where the Clean Air Zone is also where the lowest levels of car and van ownership are. So what we're seeing is people living in areas of high air pollution where they are not the people who are generating that pollution. There's a real inequality there which we want to tackle. Next slide, please. I think we'll flick through that slide, that was showing some other work around different medical conditions and admissions, but we'll flick through it. Okay, so Public Health Outcomes Framework has an indicator on particulate matter 2.5, and it's been updated recently, but we are working with the indicator saying that in 2020, across Portsmouth, long-term exposure to man-made fine particulate air pollution was likely to have contributed to approximately 6.9% of early deaths in adults over the age of 30. It's a very long convoluted indicator and it's very complicated in terms of how it's been modelled, but it's one of the highest figures in England outside of London. And it's something that we're taking note of. In reality, air pollution contributes a small amount to the deaths of a large number of exposed individuals rather than being solely responsible for the death of specific individuals. Next slide, please. So back to transport and the transport strategy, which has a strapline improving journeys for a greener and healthier future. So one of the strategic objectives of the local transport plan, as Hayley's already mentioned, is to deliver cleaner air. And these are the specific policies that are coming out of that objective. So to implement a government-directed, centre-clean air zone, which is now operational, to support infrastructure for alternative fuel vehicles and so on and so forth. And I think what we're trying to achieve is that everyone who lives and works or visits the city should be able to breathe air that will not damage their health. The Clean Air Zone in isolation is unable to deliver the levels of reduction of pollution needed across the city, so therefore has to be supported by a number of complementary measures, some of which are detailed in this slide. And obviously, for the purpose of today, one of those is around putting in alternative infrastructure such as EV charging. Next slide, please. So just touching on the Clean Air Zone, although I won't talk too much about it, we have a Class B charging Clean Air Zone, began operating in November last year, and it covers the south-west of Portsea Island. It's focused on two air pollution hotspots and the zone has daily charges which are issued to the oldest, most polluting buses, coaches, taxis, private hire vehicles and heavy goods vehicles. The zone is also supported by a number of non-charging measures, including the distribution of grants for drivers. In the first three months of operation, we had over 4,000 vehicles charged. I think we're seeing on average around a million vehicles. I want to say a day, but I may have that wrong. Don't quote me on that. But yeah, so we have had over 4,000 vehicles were charged. Interestingly, because we've done a lot of groundwork in the run-up to this becoming operational, 96% of the vehicles that could be charged entering are actually compliant. And a lot of that has been achieved through the Clean Air Fund, if you could just move to the next slide, please. So the Clean Air Fund offered grants which opened to the public in March last year, eight months before the CAS became operational, and it gave many businesses the opportunity to upgrade prior to the launch. And we funded the upgrade of 69 heavy goods vehicles with grants of up to 16,000. Buses, it's actually more buses because we had a retrofit bus scheme prior to this as well, but retrofitting or upgrading buses with grants of up to 15,000 each. And then taxis and private hire vehicles, including those which are accessible for wheelchairs. And the PCC's taxi licence fleet is now 97% compliant. Next slide, please. So as I said earlier, the CAS is just one part of a much bigger problem and it's only in one part of the city. We know we have known exceedances along roads elsewhere in the city. So there are, there are a whole suite of schemes and major strategic projects that all contribute to air quality. So you know, at a very local level, we did changes to taxi licensing policy, means that the licence fleet is now 97% compliant. That was supported through the Clean Air Fund to enable taxi drivers to have grants to upgrade their vehicles. We've done traffic management works through changes to signals to reduce queuing and improve traffic flow. This is in the CAS itself, and this has been monitored over the long term to understand whether or not the forecast modelled impacts on air quality have been realised, but also to see if there are any unforeseen consequences on the transport network that may cause problems elsewhere. We have a number of strategic and cross-boundary schemes which will also contribute to tackling air quality. So Zebra, the zero emission bus regional areas work, it's part of the National Bus Strategy and it's looking at electrical hydrogen buses, which we're part of. We led the bid with Hampshire County Council and we were awarded 6.65 million from the DFT to take that forward. We also have the South East Hampshire Rapid Transit Strategic Programme, and this is a programme of 23 interventions to create a high-quality multimodal travel system that connects the region across Portsmouth and South East Hampshire. We have the Solent Mobility Zone, which is Hayley's bag, definitely not mine, but focuses things on things like the Voy e-Scooter Pilot Trials that we're doing across Portsmouth and the Beryl bikes and even things as far-fetched as drones, deliveries and so on. We have an east-west active travel corridor, which is being delivered through our Active Travel and Road Safety Team, trying to encourage behavioural change through active travel, and that links into all sorts of different agendas, including the Green in agenda. And then behavioural change campaigns, we have a longstanding cough cough engine off air quality campaign, which is going to be reinvigorated this year to stop engine idling, which is also a significant problem. And then we also have a lot of work around EV infrastructure, which is my segue to hand back to Hayley.
Thanks, Bethan. So I'm going to talk to you about what we've done and what we're planning to do in terms of EV charging infrastructure. So our main focus has been on the On Street Residential Charge Point Scheme, or ORCS, which was brought forward by OZEV. We developed our initial scheme, which we rolled out in 2019, based on requests that were coming in from residents. So we had started to get residents, contact us and say they wanted to charge, they didn't have off-street parking, and we were keeping record of those. We looked at our city, as I mentioned at the beginning, we do have a number of areas with terraced housing, no off-street parking, so we mapped all those areas, looked at the demographics and did a piece of work as to who were those who were likely to be early adopters of EV vehicles and obviously used our local knowledge of the city and the residents as well. So with that, we came up with a plan for the scheme. Next slide. And we did, we put in a bid to OZEV and we did a survey to inform the bid. We wanted to understand the parking situation. We were looking initially at whether we marked the parking bays or not, so we're asking residents around that. Some residents were saying they park their vehicle five streets away, so we needed to understand those specifics, understanding whether residents already owned their vehicles or not. So some had bought the vehicles, were charging at work or supermarkets, others said they just possibly couldn't buy until they had guaranteed infrastructure to charge. We also got residents' views on the charge point locations, being that they were going to be shared infrastructure, but wanted to understand what those who definitely wanted them thought. Some of them wanted their vehicle within sight of their house, others weren't so concerned about that. We did ask questions around how much they were willing to pay in terms of a tariff and also contributions towards any charge point infrastructure. Next slide. So the solution we came up with was the lamp column solution. And we brought this forward because it was lower cost, we were utilising the spare capacity within our lamp columns, which gives us around about 5.5 kilowatt charge for units. We, yeah, where we had narrow streets, this provides less street clutter. And we did decide to mark out parking bays and have an associated TRO, traffic regulation order with those, so that residents could guarantee access to those and they would be enforceable. So next slide. So there were some issues in developing the scheme. Where we're using the lamp column solution, we did find a large number of our lamp columns are situated at the back of footway. But there was a work around that where we have a bollard at the front of the footway, slimline bollard, so it's not adding to street clutter and the cabling from the lamp column goes under the pavement. So there's no trailing cables and it's still low cost and minimal street clutter. There was the concerns about accessing the charge points, which is where we have bought in the enforceable parking bays, which we weren't necessarily going to at the beginning. And we do have an ongoing issue where we've got some heritage style lamp columns, which just aren't suitable to take the infrastructure that needs to go within the lamp column itself for the charge points. So we need to start bringing in standalone charge points in our conservation areas that have these lamp columns. So next slide. So we installed in March 2019, we installed 36 charge points, and that was with our supplier Ubetricity. And then we, a further 62 were installed, all of them installed by March this year. They were, that was a long time coming, they were approved during pandemic and that there was delays during that, but we now have nearly 100 on-street charge points across the city. The second phase is with a different supplier, JoJo, but residents have got a good network there of charge points. We are developing a bid for future phases of our charge points and we've got over 270 requests and we will be taking forward that scheme very shortly to roll out as many more additional on-street charges as we possibly can. So utilisation of those charge points, so I think it's somewhere in the region of 250,000 kilowatt-hours that have been used. So yeah, it's quite considerable usage. If anyone wants to know anything sort of specific, then I can try and find those out. For the phase one of our scheme, we were successful in receiving the 2019 TransTech Award for E-mobility progress. We were one of the first to roll out such a scheme. We didn't have many other authorities to look to for rolling out residential charge points. So we have provided quite an amount of advice to other authorities on that, where we've brought forward residential and others haven't. And recently, you may have seen that there was an article from ZapMap that quoted us as being sort of second in local authorities in terms of access to public charge points within a five-minute walk from residents. So we're really pleased with that result and it reflects the sort of amount of work we've been doing to try and provide residents with charge points going forward. So we've, that's kind of an overview of the residential scheme. We have also installed some charge points for the taxi trade, linked to the Clean Air Zone, and obviously they were impacted. We are bringing forward nine rapid chargers, which were situated in off-street car parks and are restricted specifically for use for the taxi and private hire trade. We have found, one has been installed and we have found that usage has, well, there's been no usage for it to date. So we are looking to open that up to the general public and have a rapid charger for the general public. And we're continuing with the installation of the further eight, which will be restricted to taxi trade and hoping we'll encourage some uptake for them. So our next steps are, if you flick to the next slide. So we'll be taking forward the third phase of our residential scheme. Obviously, we've, we are basing it on residents' requests. We do appreciate that we need to demonstrate an amount of equity as well and be rolling out charge points across the city and not just to those that can afford electric cars and try and help those other neighbourhoods in the city. We are taking the approach on meet the demand at the moment, but what we are bringing forward is an EV strategy and implementation plan. So that EV strategy and implementation plan will look at all these issues. So it will look at where we roll out on future residential and also the off-street car parks. So there's a huge amount of car parks in the city, whether that's pay and display or leisure centres, which could really benefit from charging infrastructure. We have got minimal infrastructure in place in those at the moment. So we have really focused on the residential side of things and we'll be looking to roll it out wider into off-street locations coming forward. So I think that's the end of the slides, so happy to take questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much, both, some really, really nice insights. You've actually answered at least one of the questions I was thinking to ask, which was about what lessons you've learned from elsewhere. And I think, I think Hayley, you were saying that in terms of some of the residential queries, actually, there weren't many lessons to learn from elsewhere, but people have been learning from you, so that's good to hear. I had one question about what's the most difficult in that we've been talking this week about residential to workplace, private vehicles, commercial garages, off-road parking, there are about as many permutations as there are cars, vans or lorries. Which is the hardest bit to tackle? What's your toughest challenge at the minute and why? Do you have one real, real stinker?
Well, I guess we've only really focused on the residential side of things. Removing parking spaces is a huge challenge within that and yeah, trying to best meet residents' needs. Obviously, I've mentioned that we were trying to tackle taxi trade as well and trying to get charge points that would benefit them and where they want them. In terms of sort of other types of charging, Bethan mentioned the Zebra scheme with buses and trying to work with the bus operators to bring in charging facilities for them somewhere around the city. So there are a lot of challenges, I think the more you look into it, the more, the more you find. I think, yeah, in terms of what we've done with the residential, it's probably the removal of parking spaces, which when I say removal, we're not removing it, we're designating it to electric vehicles, but that is probably the most controversial thing.
Yeah, I could understand that. And I mean, we did have some comments earlier in the week from council saying that they also had some interesting conflicts where some of the people who were most keen to interesting conflicts where some of the people who were most keen to have charging infrastructure were also most keen that you couldn't see anything and there was no street clutter. So, um, uh, potentially made it quite difficult to actually satisfy their, their requests. So just following up on something you said there, because we have a nice question from Lucy, asking, um, did you engage with local businesses, retail, leisure offices, et cetera, to collaborate to expand the network? I know you, you had some nice slides about resident surveys and I know Bethan was talking about behaviour change and obviously understanding what the mood and the sentiment is before you start is all part of that journey. But have you done any of that with the business community as well?
No, that, um, hasn't really been done broadly. We might have had the odd conversation, um, where we've been approached, but that will come with the electric vehicle strategy. We're developing the implementation plan because what we're keen on, if private sector, supermarkets or what have you are providing infrastructure that's publicly available, we don't need to duplicate that. So we'll be taking forward those conversations as we develop the strategy in more detail.
But what we have done though, not specifically relating to EV infrastructure, is engage with businesses in relation to the Clean Air Zone. Um, and we employed a number of engagement officers who focused on, um, businesses within the city. Uh, so we had one specifically liaising with those who have HGVs. We have one who specifically liaises with the taxi trade. And one that specifically liaises with our bus companies and coach companies. So whilst they're not necessarily having specific conversations around EV, they are having the conversations around upgrading and retrofitting and facilitating applications into the Clean Air Fund to en- enable that.
Excellent. And, uh, actually picking up another question from Lucy, I think Beth and while you're, you've got the mic as it were, um, you gave a lot of good info about, um, the, uh, health considerations and impacts. And I know, for instance, the national figure used to be something like 40,000 excess deaths down to air pollution per annum, which is an unbelievable number. Um, Lucy asked a question. Um, uh, how often will you be monitoring air quality? Have you already seen a difference? Um, what do you expect? You know, so if it comes down to the data, where are you with the monitoring and the?
Okay. So obviously, um, as a local authority, we, um, have a statutory and legal obligation to monitor areas of high air pollution and we have to report on that through the annual status report to DEFRA every year, and that is undertaken by our regulatory services colleagues, um, across a network of diffusion tubes and air quality monitors. That happens outside of the CAS, um, so to speak anyway, and is an ongoing business as usual thing. Uh, but with the Clean Air Zone in particular, um, we've employed, um, or distributed, um, a lot more air quality monitoring. And that is, um, that's real-time monitoring. Um, so it will be diffusion tubes for NO2. Um, some of them that we've got for other trials are also picking up on PM 2.5. Um, and that is all going into the mix as well. Uh, we are looking to, um, well, the annual status report to DEFRA picks up on all of this monitoring. So it's an annual thing, has to be calibrated. We haven't seen the final annual status report for the operational year of the Clean Air Zone. Um, so it's too early to say. The modelling that was done for the full business case for the Clean Air Zone beforehand suggests that all of these measures should mean that we will see, um, low threshold pollutant levels within two years, um, of the CAS being operational. Um, we'll see, is all I can say. Um, but yes, we are monitoring and we monitor, um, um, across the whole city.
Okay, excellent. And I know there are quite a few sort of free apps and publicly available things that, um, people who are concerned are using maybe to get a guide as to the air quality today. Do you find that kind of data sharing and sort of citizen science and do you find that helpful or and reliable or is that potentially confusing information sometimes?
Um, I've not come across any of those apps, I have to say.
Okay.
Um, um, in a previous authority I worked for, um, they, uh, they were establishing their own air alert system. Um, at a count, uh, across two counties and it was based of, um, I think it was a DEFRA air quality alert system as well. I think I would normally go for those that are coming out from, um, reputable channels around higher levels of air pollution. Um, I, I, yeah, I probably can't comment too much on that.
That's good. Well, maybe it's just the case then that I know some real power nerds who are accessing some kind of open source data and have more information than the average member of the public. But, uh, we've got a, a bunch more questions now. So I'll try and rattle along. A nice first question came in from Denise Day. Um, who asked, uh, and this is a kind of common question perhaps going out to councils. Do you have any specific documentation or clauses for grant of lease for electric vehicle charging points, EV charging, cable rights and for air quality compliance in car parks? So, uh, uh, it's a kind of general question in terms of people wanting to know what the documentation is and the rules are in their area with your council. I wonder if you could give a bit of guidance as to what's available and how people get hold of it.
Yeah, in, in terms of the, the charge points, um, there's no lease arrangement in place. Um. And we have guidance if people want to trail their cable across the pavement. Um, at the moment, we don't require any kind of permit or such on that, but, um, we're keeping that under review. Um. So I think, yeah, from our point of view, the kind of legal and specific documentation is probably around the traffic regulation orders to do with the parking bays, um, more than anything. Um, if that answers that question.
Okay, good stuff. And, um, we also had, um, we had a couple of questions come in from, uh, Katie Hickford. Uh. They asked, uh, what's, well, the first thing they asked was, um, what's your advice for local authorities who want to start rolling out charge points but haven't had resident requests? You made some nice points about getting resident requests. What if you haven't? Uh, what would be your thoughts of that?
Um, I think, I mean, it's one that you can, um, perhaps reach out to residents and, and try and understand the demand. I think, um, we've got quite a good sort of market research team who do have the insights into the demographics. Um, as to who's likely to buy them, but obviously bearing in mind the kind of equity point of view as well. Um, and definitely I think the focus is on those who, who aren't able to provide the charge points themselves. Um, so where you know those, those houses, um, they're likely to potentially convert to electric vehicle, but they just don't have the off-street parking to provide that. And so they need that infrastructure provided elsewhere.
Excellent. And, um, uh, another one from Katie also asked, uh, utilization of your residential charge points. Are there patterns on times of day people are plugging in? What's the rough utilization percentages look like? How are you? You're mapping a lot of things, including air quality. How are you also mapping usage and, um, trying to get a picture of how this is going to play, especially through peak times, school on, on and off, you know, et cetera, et cetera, football games, you name it. How are you mapping all this kind of, uh, behaviour?
Yeah. So one thing I probably didn't touch on is the fact that actually these are designed for residents to use overnight. So uh, being that they're 5.5 kilowatt hours, they, um,
Right.
probably take around six, six hours to do a full charge maybe, depending on the car and everything else. Um. So we do monitor when the car plugs in, when, which is normally when the charge starts and then when the charge ends and when the car unplugs. Um, so we can see if that vehicle is staying there longer than it charged, is charging. Um, and if there's any particular overstay issues, but saying that because it's designed for overnight charging, we wouldn't expect someone to move their car at 3am if the charge had finished. Um, to date, we've not suffered any particular overstay issues. Um. There is a balance in some areas of the city because there's parking congestion and only one electric vehicle. It may be that that driver does park in the EV bay, um, when perhaps they don't always need to charge. Um. But they do connect to not exacerbate parking congestion and leave that space empty. Um. So there, there is a lot of complexities to it, I would say. Um, and we are, so for our rapid chargers for taxis, for example, we do have an overstay charge in place that if, um, if the vehicle was there for over 90 minutes, they would then incur a, a fine, um, and a charge to, to encourage them to move on. So we would consider that for the residential if it was necessary.
Okay, excellent. We're getting a flurry of questions now. I've got a couple extra. One I was going to ask, um, I've been asking all the people this week is, um, no matter what your strategy, um, you can still have issues with supply chain, skill shortages, post-COVID conflict in Ukraine. So how confident are you that the UK and your area, perhaps in terms of businesses and skills, can actually help and provide the resources you need to roll this out? Is that a concern for you?
Yeah, I would say it is. Um, as I mentioned, there was delay during the pandemic, um, and that was, there was some delays in, um, actually infrastructure and parts being available. Um, I'm sure as many other local authorities are finding that actually any expertise in electric vehicle infrastructure is very minimal. Um, and it's being able to recruit to those posts to deliver this. Um, and we have had to try a different number of avenues to get um, staff in and have got staff without EV expertise, but sort of good project management or transport planning backgrounds, um, to deliver that. But I think there is a, a capability issue in this field, um, which, which probably needs addressing, um, UK-wide.
Sure. And we've got another good question from Lucy here says, uh, uh, are you looking at EV charging its impact on disabled residents, making accessible to those with EVs, also thinking about how additional street furniture might impact them? That's, um, that's an additional consideration. So, um, what are your, what are your allowances there?
So we've made sure when we've installed the infrastructure that we are maintaining the pavement width. So where we've had to install a bollard, we've made sure that doesn't line up with the lamp column. So it's offset so that the pavement width is maintained throughout. Um, we have installed some of our, um, on-street charge points have been installed at the request of disabled residents. Um, and they have been situated at the end of a disabled bay near the residence property. Um, so they can be accessed from both the disabled bay and the adjacent parking bay to give them access. Um, and we've made sure sort of the height of the, the charge points and things, um, suit wheelchair users and those kinds of things. Um, so yeah, it is a key consideration, um, both for the users and non-users to make sure, um, we're, we're meeting those needs.
Okay, great. And we're getting a real flurry of questions. So I'll try and fire up one or two quick ones. Uh, a simple one, maybe even a yes, no from Catherine Occultree. Do you have off-street EV points?
Yes, we have the one for taxi charge points. We've got a couple in car parts that we're putting as a trial, just a couple of seven kilowatt ones. And we also have a couple at our park and ride site, um, which were put in when that was built and they're not even monitored in terms of usage. So very minimal and we're looking to expand on that.
And, um, there was also one, eh, scrolling away, from Emma Slade, who, um, um, a lot of privately owned car parks in residential areas, will you be working with these to allow, uh, out-of-hours charging for residents? And there's some nice points made in the week about the fact that of course, private landowners, it is an opportunity, you know, they can lease that land, they can have a revenue stream potentially, uh, working with solutions providers. So, um, how are you integrating opportunities there to use existing land?
Yeah. So as we develop the strategy, we'll work with, um, yeah, private car park owners. Um, and we have been approached by, um, sort of different, um, a company that helps people rent out their EV charge point and those kinds of things. So we will be investigating those options and whether that's something that will work, work for the city.
And I had a couple more questions as well. So I've got to ask, inevitably I've got to ask one about cost. Um, you know, we're in the teeth of an economic crisis, budget cuts are looming. Apparently governments already ask, I mean, seems to be cuts every year, but we can expect cuts, uh, coming down the pipe for sure. Um, so really have a two-part question. The second part may be, um, uh, to Hayley, I was gonna ask sort of where's the money gonna come from to deliver on your plans? The first part, which I know you touched on slightly, but Beth and I was gonna ask you, you, you get some interesting information about the, um, deprivation issues faced in some parts of your area and the equity issues potentially. So it's not just about budget cuts and money being tight, but it's who that impacts most and potentially it hurts those who can least afford it. So, um, what are your thoughts about whether there are going to be adverse impacts and whether it's going to make it more of a case of haves and have-nots in terms of who's going to get any access to EV charging there? Is it gonna hurt those who are in the areas that are all a little struggling?
Gosh, that's, um, quite a big question to ask. I'm not sure I actually have a, an answer to that. Um. Um, I actually don't have an answer to that. I think, I think for me, the inequality is the fact that the air pollution impacts those who are the most vulnerable. Um, and it's not those, it's not necessarily those people living there who are creating the air pollution in the first place. So the first, the first task is to improve air quality. Um, and that may not be by providing EV opportunities for those commu-, for the people who live in those areas. That's about tackling the people who are currently driving through their areas, um, in vehicles which are emitting fuel exhaust emissions. Um, there, I'm, I'm sure there is, there is scope. I mean, we've, Hayley and I have both been approached by health and social care, um, by other colleagues who are leading on, um, energy, the, yeah, the energy and housing side of things and, um, poverty, um, leaders around, you know, what, what opportunities there are to use public sector estates, um, housing lands that we own, um, hospital land that we own to put in EV charging infrastructure, perhaps for fleets. Um, for all those people who are driving around the city, um, servicing these, you know, the communities, um, in social housing and so on. And that's a huge area to explore. Um, but just picking up on kind of like the cost, there is also a budget attached to all of that. Um, and, um, that, those budgets are not limitless. So it's a case of being creative and clever and seeing what we can do collaboratively.
Excellent. That's a nice response because I asked a similar question to Department for Transport earlier in the week and they said it was a loaded question. Which, uh, you know, I was very pleased to hear. So, um, yeah, I'm trying to spice it up a little bit in that sense. And the other part, if you like, or by all means answer the same part, but the other part of the question to you, Hayley, in terms of, obviously you talked a lot about what you plan to do and it's not free. There's a cost to it. So how confident are you like with anything coming out, local authorities, that you're gonna have the money to do it?
Yeah. So, um, I think previously with our first two rounds of the on-street, we have, um, relied on the 75% OZEV grant. And then the council have put in the 25% match funding. Going forward, we'll be looking to get OZEV grants if possible, but we'll be looking to suppliers to actually provide that match funding and have a lot more commercially viable contracts. With expanding the numbers to sort of, I was talking about over 270 in the next phase, that's a lot more attractive. And if we go for longer term contracts, they'll also be more attractive to hopefully draw in that supplier, um, funding towards it because yeah, as you're right, there's, there's always cuts. And, um, yeah, um, it'd be something that we'll be looking for the private sector to help, um, fund. I guess the other part of the cost element is the tariff to the users. Um, everyone's aware of what's going on with the energy market. Um, and we're working with suppliers to try and keep those tariffs low. Um, and there is concern that if tariffs do go up, will that generate lots more people trying to trail cables across the pavement and ignoring our charge points because the tariffs are too high? So that's an ongoing sort of thing we need to be monitoring and working with the suppliers on as well.
Yeah. And I think a nice point was made in the week about, um, what would really change the game. And it was when, um, uh, public um, charging, uh, is available at the same kind of cost as home charging. It was suggested that that would really perhaps change some patterns of usage. So we're moving into the last few minutes. Um, and I'll, I'll give you a warning and would like to finish with each of you giving us the key lessons you've learned so far, if you had to pass on your top tips. So I'll leave you to start pondering that. But if key lessons you've learned so far, the kind of things you wish you'd known when you started or the, the biggest eureka moments that you've had to date. But just before we get to that, so I'll leave that playing in the back of your mind. But first, gonna ask you just a little one. Um, some of the other local authorities talked about how, uh, it's been interesting, there've been some challenges trying to work with different departments or teams within their own, um, organisation. For example, the energy team and how this can be a cross-sector or a cross-team, um, thing. So say with planning and transport and energy. Uh, so Beth, and if I came to you first, how much have you been working across departments and teams around these issues? And how much has that been a great collaborative experience and how much has it been a challenge, um, syncing together the different priorities?
Well, I suppose I'm quite a good example of that because I'm not a transport planner or a transport professional. I actually joined the team coming from public health. Um, and I would say, having also worked in a county council, um, that the city council is actually quite good at, um, having that collaborative focus. And both Hayley and I, um, have a lot of contact with the head of our energy team, energy services, um, who I suspect may even be on this call. Um, because he'll probably message us afterwards. Um, so, uh, we work closely with regulatory services from an air quality perspective. Um, we sit in the same directorate as planning, planning as well, um, and wider regen and infrastructure. Um, you know, there are always going to be issues working in silos when you're in a large organisation, such as local authorities. Um, but I would say that we're doing quite well on that one, actually.
Excellent. And I'll ask the same question to Hayley and that'll buy you, Beth, in a little bit of time to think of your key takeaways because I'm going to come back to you in a mo there. So you can ponder your top tips while Hayley buys you time. I should also say, by all means, mention if you have needed to collaborate more with external bodies or academics or whatever, you know, to what degree this is a team game and how well that's worked.
Yeah, I mean, I would echo what Bethan says that as a unitary authority, actually Portsmouth have got really good cross-departmental working for the project delivery. We've had good governance in place where we've had working groups and boards with representative from energy team planning and across all the relevant departments to make sure they're aware and looped in and inputting into all of our plans. So that's worked really well for us as a, as a unitary. And then I think when we were developing the scheme, I, I actually benefited from a lot of different conversations from suppliers to organisations like Senex, OZEV, Energy Saving Trust. So there was a wealth of people who were willing to kind of give advice on that. And I think that's something that as, as this has taken off, is maybe dropping away. And I think those kinds of networks are really valuable. Like I say, I've provided advice to a number of local authorities. But they probably don't necessarily know who's doing what and how to reach you. So I think, yeah, external networks are a good thing to have established.
Excellent. Nice point. And that brings me nicely around then to Beth. And so first Beth and then Hayley, this is our closing remarks because they're just about bang on time, which is great. So do you have, what are the key lessons learned or the most important things or even eureka moments? Have you got any real nuggets there? So to crystallise this whole experience down into just a couple of sentences. How difficult can that be? Where are you going, Beth? And if you give us your top tips for how to do this?
So I've got almost a get out of jail card here because I've only been in post for eight weeks. So however, I suppose that just kind of like a, a tip really from an air quality perspective is if you want to do air quality, you've got to monitor it and you've got to monitor it before you do whatever it is you want to do. And so that you've got a baseline and that you continue monitoring. And to do that, it's not just about the capital outlet. It's not just about getting the kit there. You actually have to have the people who know how to use it, who are going to be there to monitor, who are going to be there to do the reporting. And it is something that, alluding to what Hayley said earlier around capacity, we are really struggling with at the moment is finding that capacity and finding that skills and expertise around air quality. So top tip is if you have good staff for doing that, please keep them because they're very few and far between and you need them.
Look after your valuable staff. And could you just give me an idea of how long that runway might be? If you, you say start early and get that baseline, how long might that take? What sort of timeframe?
How long's a piece of string? I mean, really?
You could always get more, but what would you say is a guesstimate time?
If you've got a, if you've got a, if you've got a really big scheme in place from air quality, technically you should probably, you probably would have been monitoring it already because it, it was through that monitoring that it was identified as a pollution hotspot. But you, you, you need like a good year's worth of data. You know, it's not always the case to be able to prove, to prove trends over time, really.
Good point. And of course, these things are affected by the weather and the seasons and all this kind of thing. Also, hence you, you can't just give winter data and expect it to work in summer. Right. So there, and then coming to you then, Hayley, last couple of words. Big lessons learned, top tips. If you remember one thing, one or two things, what should it be, Hayley?
I mean, I think the biggest lesson we've probably learnt in delivering the infrastructure is that it is quite, quite complex and can be a can of worms. Like reiterate what Bethan said around capability and resourcing, stakeholder involvement and just time scales, if the surveys, you've got to do the consultation. Really don't think, well, you can just buy a charge point off the shelf and install it, but a scheme like ours does take quite a long time to deliver. So just be aware of that.
And so you'd, would you say time spent on your strategy can save you a lot of time later?
Yeah, I think, yeah, definitely.
Excellent. So nice point to finish on. And also very good to hear that, you know, staff are valuable because we are talking about things and tech and vehicles and systems and infrastructure. But all of it needs people to put it together if we're going to manage this transition as we go forward. So perfect notes to finish on. We're bang on time. So a big thank you to our panellists and presenters, Hayley and Bethan from Portsmouth City Council. To yourselves out there on Crowdcast, our virtual audience, for your comments and questions. Reminder, as I said at the top of the show, check out Elemental, elementaldigital.co.uk, online community for professionals focused on innovation, heat, water, air and energy, vital elements within the built environment now and in the future. As I said, full diary events on the website, including a back catalogue of the previous sessions from this festival yesterday and the day before, all free, all available to watch on demand. And this session will be available within less than five minutes, I think. So if you missed the start, you can tune straight back in and catch what was said at the beginning. So a big thank you then again to our presenters. Great job. And that's it for today. I've been Jim McLeod, editor at Suss Meme. Thank you for watching and we will see you all again soon. Thanks very much.